So, great system, they were a great system, they haven't been sold new, I think two thousand nine, two thousand ten, something like that, so. Year due, I mean courthouse is due for an update, I mean it's an older system and and. Remanufactured parts, things are getting harder to find, but.
So how long would the system be down, or would you do it section?
So, uh, installation, um, basically what we'll do is um, get the new system installed. We'll pretty much take programming out of the old system mimic that the new system unless there's changes or how we want things set up. Um, so basically the new system would be sitting side by side with the existing.
You really don't have that downtime?
Fairly minimal downtime, so at some point we do have to swing all the lines from. The old system to the new, that is usually. No, no, not at all, um, that's usually a matter of ten fifteen minutes to swing the lines of downtime. The second part of any downtime is actual changing the phones at people's desks, you know, so. Not the whole courthouse won't be down at one time, it's just, uh, I shouldn't say that when we swing the lines, the whole courthouse will be down. Uh, but individual users, just as we are able to get to their desks and change their phones. But fairly minimal.
Time wait as far as uh, from the time we order to the time. The equipment is all here and installed?
We'd be ready, like I said, we're just wrapping up another large project over in rugby right now, um, we'd be ready. Like I said, I have to place the order for the system and the phones that generally takes a week, two weeks maybe. Um, and then we just kind of want to lay out an installation plan again, so I mean we'd realistically be looking at three, four weeks. For a installation.
I guess I'd lean towards the digital, just so your, you know, your computers and your phone lines aren't. Down at the same time, you know, I mean, it looks like it's more expensive on paper, but there's a lot of. But there could be substantial things. Horse piece, so I think just the. Fact that the whole courthouse wouldn't be communicationless, I think the digital would be the way to go.
Would agree with that.
Want to put that in form of motion?
Sure, I move that we accept the digital option of the bid.
I second that motion.
Okay, then moved in second that we go ahead with the digital option for the new phone system for the building. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis. Wilhelm me.
Hi.
Volk.
Right.
Gessner.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi, motion carries. Let's get it ordered.
Okay, sounds great, thank you guys, yep.
And hey, just a reminder, these are coming out of COVID dollars, correct?
Funds are coming out of. Yes, there was money set aside. For that.
Okay.
Think we came in, uh. Just shy of. Thousand dollars.
Thank you. I think we're really close to the uh. Eight thirty agenda item, which should be the final budget for the Lake Region District Health. Waiting for the other conference calls to join us. Mister Heiser, would you like to come on up? This is Rogers.
Who's the chairman now?
Is that the one it was last year?
Is that if you'll take it? Terry Hopper.
Can you speak closer to the phone, please?
Okay, Mike Christensen nominated Blaine to take it another year. Terry Hopper second that motion if you'll take it.
Uh, we're. Did we do the roll call of the counties yet? So can we get a roll call of all the counties of everybody that's here? We'll start here at Ramsey County.
Lee Gessner.
Oh, Wilhelm. No Otis.
Lane Volk, can we move on with Eddie?
Glenda Collier.
Jamie Olmers.
Name is Gertz.
Kay Pierce.
Pierce County roll call.
Terry Hopper. Mike Christensen, I.
You gotta speak closer to the phone, please.
David Lawrence, Pierce County. The ball, Pierce County. Dave Migler, Pierce County.
Hey, everybody's there for the roll call of the counties. Oh, I'm sorry Benson County.
Everybody come, Benson County.
Ron Sodom, Benson County. Your corner, Benson County.
David Davis, here he is.
David Davis.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, so that should uh, conclude the roll call of all the counties. Motion on this. No, it's just a roll call, so we can move on to the minutes from twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'd move to approve the minutes from uh, last year's meeting.
Second.
So we got a motion, we got a second to approve last year's. Meeting minutes, all in favor of saying aye? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, moving on to the. Twenty twenty-five budget. Is there any alibis, or is there anything out there for discussion of twenty twenty-five budget?
Anybody have anything for the twenty twenty-five budget?
To help the show, you know, because our, our uh, fee went up for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you gotta speak closer to the phone.
Where are we at at the, at the, the amount of mills that we can have? Are we maxed now or not?
We're not maxed yet, this year it looks like we're around four point six seven, but who's, who's talking this week? Terry.
Terry Hopper.
Did you hear that Terry, four point six?
Speak closer to your machine.
Four point six seven.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
All I have. Hard to believe.
Is there anything else from any other counties? No other alibis, I guess that moves on to approving the budget for twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the budget?
Glenda Collier, I still move.
I'll second it, Mike Christensen.
So we have a motion to approve the budget and a second. All those in favor are saying aye? Motion carries to approve the twenty twenty-five budget. Hmm, meeting adjourned, I guess, if everybody doesn't have anything else. Thank you guys for attending.
Alright, have a good day.
Yep, thanks.
We will resume the Ramsey County Commission meeting. Somebody want to grab the waterboard? Yep, come on in, Ron.
Uh, good morning, everyone, uh, like today, do you want a full report on the waterboard? Uh, work right now, or is this mainly about the resolution that we set across?
Why don't we do both?
Oh, it's uh, been a fairly busy year from the waterboard this year, obviously rained. Uh, we've got a lot of interest in the upper basin about snagging clear projects that we're working on, the lotton area specifically. I know guys have done some work over there on their own, and now they're looking to get a little bit of a bigger project together, so. That's uh, been quite a bit of work involved in it, we're looking at how we can tie some of the areas together, maybe with our. The existing stagnant clear projects make the whole area work better. That's kind of tied up a lot of our business, I guess, uh, otherwise it's just a general. Trying to deal with the water conditions and everybody that needs cleaning and would like to see cleaning. And how that all ties together with through our assessment areas that we have. I guess, and that kind of leads into where we came up, uh. Talking about a comprehensive water plan, you know, everything we do through the water board is. Kind of deals with drainage, you know, this area obviously it's farm drainage. Problem comes down to that it all comes down to the lake, which in a closed basin and affects the same people. In order to. Do the best job for everybody in Ramsey County, I guess we kind of feel we need some guidance as to. How we handle the upper basin while dealing with the lower basin. And I think that uh, comes timed that shows that. After all the years, all the questions that have been asked repeatedly, just in different timeframes, that something needs to happen. Help all the people in the lower basin right now, that would allow us as the waterboard to do the only thing that we're able to work with, and which is the upper basin. Has everybody's got a copy of our resolution that uh, we'd worked through at the waterboard? We do have a few copies on hand right here. I guess, uh, what we'd like to see is, uh, I do have it, but I'd like to copy. There anybody in the audience that uh, would like to copy? Is there any questions we can? Answer about it, or? You know, as far as what, you know, the waterboard, we could only deal with. More or less the first part of it, you know, we'd like to see the support from the. Commission that, you know, we don't want to see the upper basin there Ramsey County turn into a swamp, we'd like to. Be able to work with through assessments and handle basic drainage. But of course, that leads back into every bit of work we do, how that affects everybody below us.
Do you have any idea how many acres below fourteen forty-one would be talking about?
Uh, no, we don't, uh. You know, it's kind of all the numbers, it was been brought up that you'd like to see a little bit of. An idea of a plan put together, I think all the numbers that are involved, that's all needs to be sat down and. Decided more on a county level, so a lot of stuff is just to give a, start the conversation. I think somebody needs to. Sit down and say, decide on what the best elevation for Ramsey County is. You know, obviously from the state, it appears that forty-five is an elevation that it looks we have a lot of state support. You know, maybe uh, we deal, look at it from a farmer's perspective of the land. Um, maybe if you start talking, maybe in Ramsey County, they say the level should be higher. For the betterment of the county, but at that point, you also need to. Realize the private, people have private property that's they can't use. It's time that there gets. Somebody comes up with a solution for it. I mean, I think through the commission here, I mean you've asked for guidance from the. Attorney General's office, I don't know if you've gotten anything back from that yet. And it seems like a lot of same questions keep coming up, just years apart. Well, from what we've been talking, I think the only solution to this is to try to deal with it through the legislature. And that's get together. Uh, first, I think you'd need to come up with a plan of what you feel is best for Ramsey County and then sit down with. Their people from Bismarck or that go to Bismarck and try to negotiate a plan that they can present. I think that level needs to be discussed at the county level, come up with the numbers to put in there. I mean, if you hold a public meeting right now, you'll have anything from twenty-five to. Probably sixty, I mean, people each are going to put in a number that benefits them specifically. I think there needs to be a larger discussion, come up with the best number for the area. Well, that's the way century code follows it right now, you have the. Bill, there's protection of the century code to drain your water off your land. I'm not saying that's uh, right, but that's the way it is. I guess our assessment districts allow us to uh, work with that a little bit, you know, where we talk in the drain ten, people up north would be paying. Help move the water, but you know, that still comes to the same question that it ends at the bottom with the people that are under the lake.
So really, since this is just a draft. And there's numbers here that need to be discussed, obviously, you're just, are you looking for us to set up a committee then, is that, is that?
Well, I, that's uh, from what, as we talk, you know, I, this is a little bit above the level of the waterboard. I think it's something that elected officials of Ramsey County need to take the reins of and start the conversations. Yep, that's why.
I think the forty-one is for, or. Well, it's, it's. From what I'm getting out of what Brian's saying here, it's uh, it's a placeholder. And what they're asking for is that we need to. Bring everybody, you know, the different entities to the table, and since this is just a draft. Come up with. The level of the lake officially, in our opinion.
Set to zero.
Set to zero. Because you could, if you look at it the other way, we can't bring any water in either, right, I mean. Yeah, but, yeah, but it's. But if there is no rain, there is no water. Which would be good for everybody, right, I mean. But it doesn't matter what, you could say fourteen fifty, you can't maintain that number either. But I think this is, in my opinion. This would drive. Hopefully, this would get to point across that after thirty years we're done, that something has to be. Either compensate them and let nature take its course. We've never had a standard, and this is what I think you're looking for is. So thirty years ago, everybody wanted their land back, right, that, that was the only option. Makes sense, but after thirty years. Now they've moved to wanting compensation, and this is what's going to drive the comp, compensation. Well, they're going to get it back, but how many generations is it going to take, right, so this to me drives the compensation thing more really than. Level, right?
Yeah, the lake. I mean rainfall can trump in thirty minutes what you pump in a year, so I mean that's.
I'm tracking. I just, it's just gonna. I don't know the answer, I don't think anybody knows the answer, but it's, I. I'm seeing where you're coming from, compensation piece of it, it's not like Lee just said, it's not so much maintaining the lake. It's, because you can't control mother nature. But at least compensating for what's been there thirty years, probably not going to recoup anything soon, right? So at least they have the option if they want. Take the compensation or not take the compensation, it is a piece of the pie at least to.
Give people.
Not going to make everybody happy, but at least it's going to help.
I'm sorry to interject here, but. As your attorney, I'd be very careful about talking about who is owed compensation for what. And from who?
I think that's a question that. A lot of people are afraid to talk about this issue, nobody wants to take on, say the wrong thing, take on any liability. I think that it needs to be looked at, but this isn't a problem. You know, and I think legislatively, it would be. Time that we could try to solve the problem if we could.
Have you uh, talked to the legislatures at all, legislators?
Uh, no, I thought we, first step should be that we try to come up with an idea of through Ramsey County of what we'd like to ask for. And it's easy to sit down and come up with ideas, but you know, there. Everyone from the fishermen to the landowners, there's a lot of different opinions. And that's more of a question that I think is that the county level needs to come up with a kind of an idea of which direction. What you're asking for first before you.
So when you, you came and addressed the joint board at our last, uh, at our September meeting, I gave you. Or suggested a few suggestions on how to go about. Coming up with this, uh, providing a stakeholder group. And sitting down with various stakeholders instead of just the five of you and sitting across the room in the water board. Office, coming up with a plan. Bringing all the stakeholders together and coming up with. Uh, um, initializing. Uh, some of these things and narrowing some of those things down. Um, have any of that taken place?
Uh, no, we haven't uh, done anything yet, uh, you know. So we kinda think at the water board, you know, we, we see how it affects us, that's the kinda what's driven bringing this up. You know, it's hard for us to do anything with every time we come up with a plan, you know, right away, we look over at our neighbors that are sitting beside us. And we see how it's affecting them. And we don't really have anything in century code that gives us the authority to do anything beyond what we have been doing. So we can, we've got an idea and I think the place for it to start is more with the county than with just five of us that are unelected.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking is. Who, who puts together the stakeholder group? I get, you know, I mean, that's where it has to be, I mean, it has to be.
Well, is that something that they're looking for us to give them permission or?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's where I was trying to get to is, is what's the problem, I mean. Do we have to give them permission or can they do it on their own or?
That's something they could do on their own, um. You know, I, I think this is a. And, um, a very basic outline and. Almost. Feels more like a mandate instead of a resolution of support. I'm not sure where the support portion of it comes in, um. Hey, and then the, the last sentence, I think, uh, could potentially lead to some. Uh, um. Potential litigation. Uh. If negotiations fail Ramsey County Commission, then the partners shall use legal means to reach a solution. Um. Uh, almost becomes inflammatory. Um. You know, i- it's almost a demand, um.
This is definitely a rough.
That's more of a. Guideline to be built off, or I don't think there's very much of it that. In its present form that has a. Very far to go with it, but I think it's something that. Right people can build off of and use it to. Get towards where they wanna be.
And I think you guys are, are putting it in, in a very difficult spot. You know, you have a county that has about a four hundred and fifty uh, foot. Uh, elevation difference from top to bottom, you have a middle of the county that. Ends up sitting. Stagnant with water, sitting on it and slowly moving through it. With those in- individuals want their water off faster. Um, you have the top where water flows pretty easily. From the top to, and then you have the down. Down uh, stream landowners that are heavily affected by all the overland flooding that it creates. And so, do you promote more drainage in the upper basin? And not provide a. Outlet or a solution to the downstream constituents. Um. You, you know, cause without a, an outlet out of the, the lake. Of any evaporation in this two state outlets, uh, neither of which. Um, oh, I have provided much relief in the forms of removing water. Um.
Well, just as you said, uh, you know, there's a lot of animosity in the county from people that have no options right now. You know, viewing what's happening up north. And the problem isn't caused by anyone, it's caused by too much rain. You know, you can say the stark weather coolly contributed to it, well. There was a coolie there before it was cleaned out, when you have too much rain, it's gonna come. So it contributed to the speed of the problem maybe. Overall, there's been too much rain or. The, you know, this is a lake that's always went up and down. When people first came here, the lake was up, then all of a sudden the lake starts going down and there's all this great farmland that came available. Obviously, people want to. Make use of that. So that leads us back to now the water's back up and we've got private property that's under the water, I mean, you guys have. Asked quite a few questions of the state pertaining to that and legal issues. You know, we can go on like we are, let the cycle continue or we can try to. Do a little bit of fixing up the problems right now.
Anybody have anything else for Brian this morning?
Well, I thi- I think the stakeholders group is. You're gonna have to find some middle ground between the recreation and the people who want the water and the people who have land under the water. Otherwise, it's never gonna. It's never gonna go anywhere because no matter. What gets presented to the legislature, you're gonna have one option fighting it and one option for it. So it, it does have to start here, but it has to start with the stakeholders group.
Well, and I think the other partners that you bring in are the people that actually have. Control over what we do with our waters. You know, federal and state partners have a lot to say with. How waters of the United States move and how it. Drains get cleaned or don't get cleaned kinda thing. Um. I think there's four different federal agencies that dictate that and uh. You know, certainly at least one at the state level. So. You bring those individuals in, they don't have to necessarily have a vote on that stakeholder meeting, um, but they should be. Um, at least advisors. And be aware of the situation and the problems and the plans that you're, that you wanna go forward.
So, you get, who brings the stakeholders together? Uh, that's kinda what you're getting at, right? Somehow we gotta get. The stakeholders together, otherwise, it's just a. We're stuck right now. Right. Right. I, I think both sides, no matter how you look at it. Like you said, if there's not a stakeholder there, how? How do you fix the problem? I mean, I, I don't think there's a hundred percent fix, but. How can you make it? At least compromise on both sides, you know?
You know, this is something that I had brought up to our joint board back in July about our comprehensive water management plan, because obviously we get. Plenty of our water from other counties, uh, those that sit on the joint board. Um, was directed at that particular time to. Table the discussion until people got out of the fields and, you know, November, December type of timeframe. We do, I, I get together on a monthly basis, we've tried to bring in all those stakeholders. Um, are all invited whether or not they show up.
Yes.
Um. Some of them do, some of them don't. On a regular basis, usually the US Fish and Wildlife, Game and Fish. Um. National Weather Service are all involved in our meetings and uh, as well as State Water Commission. The Department of Water Resources. That would be a, a place to start. Um, the other place to start would be, be asked to get on the agenda at the uh, State Water Convention. And bring this forward and. And uh, they meet in December and have a discussion there. And make it, make sure that statewide, people are understanding what is still going on here in Devil's Lake.
I think if you're gonna move it forward like that, to have just a basic idea. Of what you're gonna start asking for. You should try to have that first, I think.
Probably. Um.
And pretty much everything involved in it's gonna be a negotiation.
Yep.
And there doesn't need to be any blame assigned to anybody, it's just there's a problem and it's time, we need to work at fixing it.
Anything else for Brian this morning? Any direction that the board wants to take? Yeah, welcome that down, come on up.
County Water Board for. Um, putting something forward. That, uh, you know, it's been a long time coming, I, I kinda, I was thinking, um. You know, one time we were part of the upper basin. That's kind of, you know, that's almost. Not even funny, but um. So I, I, I think it is just, uh. A brush of fresh air, what they've done. And I would hope that the county. Um, you know, you guys could, I don't know what you do, you, you don't have to make a motion, maybe you can pass a resolution. And support to the concept, I, I agree that the numbers. Um, you know, you probably shouldn't even have any numbers in, is that just, that's the first thing people look at is the number. Say, wow, you can't, you know, that's impossible. So, um. You know, there's, there's deed at land down to. Below forty one, huh?
Twenty eight.
Yeah, so, I mean, um. I, I would, I, I don't, I don't, I hope you don't get stuck on the numbers, I think it's the concepts. And just, uh, the idea that they're willing to put something forward. And I, I think it comes from the fact that. Um, you know, they, they wanna, they wanna big. Uh, clean out up there and uh, they have more coolie. And, um. You know. Uh, if that had been in place this year, I'm not sure what would have happened because, uh. You know, it's, it's, it probably isn't gonna bring any more water, but it's gonna bring it faster and then you're gonna get more water, so these are all. Part of the issues. And, um, and the water boards, they're staring at it. And, um. They, they see us, the, the, the uh, landowners at the bottom just being totally. Uh, obliterated with no. No uh, compensation, nothing. So I think that's, I'd like to thank Brian. Trying something. And I would hope that the commission would. Get behind it. I think it adds more. Um, credence to it if you guys. Uh, get behind it.
Thanks Dan.
Thank you. Come on up, Garland.
Well. These three issues were brought up by.
If you could, for the audience, just state your name.
Pardon?
Just state your name.
Garland Roysted, landlord. Former landlord out in the growth township area. But these same issues were bought, brought up by. Basin manager back in two thousand four. And. By. He asked the same questions as Attorney General back then. You, as chairman, Mr. Chairman and Basin Manager, you presented the same issues. To. What is it, uh? Water topics legislative overview committee or whatever. And no results or have it been forthcoming. And now, finally, one government agency has put this forth. And asked the county to. Represent the people. That you're representing. And here, I, I can't read it, I'm having eye problems. Karen, would you read the highlighter? Part from the. Uh, this is from the State Water Commission. Mr. Chairman, what you are part of, the duties of the highest. Water. Managers in the state.
Hi, Karen Hausman. Um, it is hereby declared that the general welfare and the protection of the lives, health, property. And the rights of all the people of this state. And in the performance of all its official duties shall be considered and construed to be performing a governmental function for the benefit, welfare. And prosperity of all the people of the state.
Now, is that? Are they? Or? I don't think they're excluding us, are they saying that? The victims of the Devil's Lake Reservoir. Have no rights. The highest, highest water managers in the state, say, protect property of all people. We got a hundred and seventy thousand acres underwater. Isn't there some obligation there from the state? From the. County, from the townships? Somebody has to step up and I appreciate that finally a board is stepping up. Might be lonely, but you gotta start somewhere, you keep increasing and maybe we'll, we'll get some representation. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else says anything else, uh, if not, we can move on. Anything from the commission?
Well, I guess I, I really think that. Some kinda stakeholders group has to be formed. And I guess if we think that that should be with the local water board taking that on at first. That's fine if the commission thinks, you know. We need to sit down and, and come up with a list of people that should be on there. That's the first thing that's gotta start, so. Either we as a commission take it on or we advise the water board to get the ball rolling. It has to start. You know, they've asked us for some guidance or support. I don't know if, if it's just a motion in support of getting the stakeholders together, if that's, that's what starts it, I don't know, I'm. Trying to be politically correct here. But I don't think we should move on until. And that portion has been figured out.
And I agree with Dan. I don't think there should be a number put on anything. I think it needs to be, it's just a support saying that something needs to be done. Because like, like Dan just said, you put a number on there, all it's gonna do is cause controversy right here in Ramsey County. And then you're never gonna move on with anything.
Well, the number, there has to be a number at some point.
At, at some point.
You know, but. So I guess.
But I, I don't think you're ever gonna come up with a discussion if, if it's.
If, yeah, if there's no group started, there's got to be a discussion, right? Because, um. Twenty years ago, you know, there was supposed to be a Friends of Devil's Lake. And that, quite frankly, had crappy leadership and somebody wasn't vested in it. Um, and it died.
Right.
You know, so. This has to start. And I guess. This has to start. And I guess. If Bo wants to chime in on on what way we can do it without getting our. Finger in the light socket. I mean, could we support things? Can we start things? Do we form a committee? What what is the?
So I appreciate you asking me. I'm not a policymaker. I'm a legal advisor. I know that you're asking for legal advice right now. But in my opinion, the best thing to do would be to table it right now until we can have a chance to fully discuss it and fully think through all of our options. That's what my advice would be.
Go ahead.
Hello, Karen Hausman. I live in Chain Lakes Township, Tryon Farm and Degrow Township as well. Um, somehow back when all of this excessive moisture started, things got done. It was an emergency. Now we're just trying to live with it and manage it. And I feel like the state has um done everything they can to protect the state, but not the citizens. We've got all kinds of structures, um Fargo diversion, everything, Devil's Lake, Dyke, just. Go down the list of all the emergency measures that were put in place to protect the people downstream. The emergency is still um alive for some of us. But we aren't doing anything to um. Deal with the day to day after the emergency. So I would suggest that we have to think back to how it got started as an emergency. Who took the lead? Who got going? How do we get the state involved? How did the county get involved? I know FEMA FEMA was involved too. But um, there must be a way to. Stakeholders or whoever it is to look at this now thirty some years later and go, okay, how do we live with this? At this same level. Um, and I would be curious at some point to hear if you've heard back from the Attorney General. On the letter that was sent by the state's attorney. But I'll stay till the end to try and hear that.
Anything else from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll move that we table this um with the intent of. Getting enough information to move forward on this by the next meeting.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded that we go ahead and table this discussion until we get additional information. Um, prior to the next meeting on the fifteenth of October. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Continuing on, Mr. Fieldson.
Morning. Okay, to start off, just update on some of the projects we still have going or. The left overlay project is pretty much finished now. It's uh, all done paving. Got the striping done. Um, they started on the guardrails yesterday. They should get finished today barring any major catastrophes. So, any questions on that project?
Just finished striping on there Saturday. So I mean, as far as the contract work is, that's completed. Um, we haven't done a final inspection yet, but uh, I guess I was out there for a good part of the construction and I looked like quality is good.
Any other questions? That's really all we have for projects now. So we'll go into the. Bills we got to pay. Um, we got the invoice from close construction for the gravel on the last of the FEMA sites. That invoices for seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go ahead and pay close construction.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay close construction. Further discussion?
Is that the last of it then?
That is the last. The graveling, yes.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Gessner.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Otis.
Upstaying, yeah.
And Fritz.
Uh, aye. Motion carries.
Okay, we got some culverts from Tru North Steel from four customers. They're for resale. And that cost was eight thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. But I'd like to entertain a motion to pay Tru North Steel.
And these culverts will be on again then. If, like say, for instance, you say you got on here, they are for resale, they don't have money.
They're already ordered for a customer, so the customer will.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Right. So move. Up second.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead and uh pay the invoice from Tru North Steel, eight thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries. Tru North is paid.
Um, KLJ has submitted two invoices, one for the South Benelac Township project. For the Township Assistance Program. That is for eighteen thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, I turned in for reimbursement for that. When we got the invoice and we've already received reimbursement. So they are getting quick at those reimbursements. And also the second bill from KLJ is for the thin leftover lay project. For four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-seven cents. So the total of the two invoices is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay KLJ Engineering.
Move to pay KLJ. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and pay KLJ Engineering. Work uh twenty-two thousand seven sixty-five, sixty-six. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Gessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries. KLJ is paid.
Hey, we talked earlier about the uh diesel exhaust filter on the motor grinders and we did have one of them done. It was actually a little bit less than what they had quoted me. The total bill was four thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, that's for that. Diesel uh filter that burns uh.
And that's one.
That's one, yep, per per unit.
I'll make the motion to pay but for the one.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and pay Butler Equipment for four thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh Husky Marketing, the road, our road oil folks, they delivered that oil to our overhead barrel. Uh, the cost was nine thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion and pay Husky Marketing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to pay Husky Marketing for the oil uh. Nine thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, Three D Specialties, the people that are putting up the guardrail for us in Ramsey Three have an invoice for uh. Some of the materials. That was seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay Three D Specialties.
And this is done?
Uh, half done, no. I mean, this was for the materials, so we're still paying for the labor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and pay Three D Specialties for the guardrails on the Ramsey Three Project, seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion passes.
I had a couple more to add. Um. J and J Striping finished painting our lines on our road lines on our chip seal project. And they also repainted uh the lines on Ramsey County Nine. We tried to repaint the ones that we chip sealed three years ago, so that included that Ramsey Nine. Uh, the invoice for that is for thirty-one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and seven cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay J and J Striping.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and pay J and J Striping for the work uh completed, thirty-one thousand, not one hundred and nine dollars and seven cents, correct?
Correct.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries.
The last one is the big one for the paving project on Ramsey Three. The progressive estimate that. Mayo Construction did was one million fifty thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And sixty-two cents. That's uh, there's still gonna be more to that. I mean, I think the bid was one point two. So there's still gonna be more. We had some withholding. In other words, there's gonna be more bills for this project. This is the last one. But for now, I'd like to entertain a motion and pay Mayo for the work they've completed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and pay Mayo Construction for the work completed on Ramsey Three. Uh, Kevin, is this prairie dog money?
This is prairie dog money. I was gonna mention that, yep.
Thank you.
And also the engineering for this project is coming out of prairie dog money.
One million fifty dollars, sev- fifty, one million fifty thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Correct.
Yep. It's been moved. It's been seconded. Further discussion? Further discussion? Roll call please.
Gessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have. At least you have something for me.
Anybody else have anything for Kevin? I want to thank you guys.
All right.
Moving on into new business approval lodge rate increase uh. North Dakota Association County sent out a memo from OMB. Uh, they increased the rates for lodging for. Uh, in-state travel from ninety-six thirty to ninety-nine dollars effective today, October first, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the ninety-nine dollars, mate.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the newer lodging rates. Uh. And further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve Homestead Credit.
I'll make a motion to approve the Homestead Credit.
In motion and seconded to approve the Homestead Credit. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-four appraised values hearing set uh for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at five forty-five. This is for uh foreclosures, I believe, Candy?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, we just need to um set the hearing date um to put in the notices to send to the different. Um township cities, that type of thing.
When is the date?
October fifteenth.
Meeting of next or?
The next meeting. Yep.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion for five forty-five, fifteen October twenty-four.
Second.
In motion and second, we approve the twenty twenty-four appraised values and set hearing date for October fifteenth. Twenty twenty-four at five forty-five P M. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. Operation Green Light for Veterans. Mr. Bryce Crosby, come on up. I want to thank you for putting everything together for this. This is something we've partaken in the last couple of years. It's only a three-year project, so. It's something new that the National Association of Counties has been doing and we're very proud supporter of it. So, Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, so this is uh, the, like Commissioner Friss said, the uh National Association of Counties was heading this up. Um, last year we had lights up on the building. Um, this year put together uh a small packet and stuff too. Uh, for distribution to some of the towns, uh businesses and uh citizens of the towns and stuff within the county. Uh, to participate along with the county um in the Operation Green Light. It goes from November fourth to November eleventh. Um, and it's asking for uh county, government offices, businesses and um people within. Uh, the county to participate by placing green lights on their houses in support of veterans and service members. Um, during that week right before veterans. Um, on there, I have within there, it's just a a small copy of the resolution. It's a canned resolution from the National Association. And then with that, a a couple of letters once. Uh, that I'll send off to the Devil's Lake Journal. And then I have a little bit fancier resolutions, stuff too. I'll I'll make small posters and then the resolution handout and distribute it like F WFW and stuff too. Um, and maybe send one each to the the towns within Ramsey County and stuff. So what I'm looking for is just. I guess uh approval for the resolution.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Good motion and second that we go ahead and approve the uh support and the resolution of support for Operation Green Light for Veterans. Um, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. I like the information that you put together here, Bryce. It looks really good. Um. Managing almost five million dollars in compensation and pension benefits for Ramsey County veterans each year. That's outstanding.
Yeah, we're doing quite well and the the support of the county has been really good too. You can tell that last monument dedication we had and stuff too, so. We get a lot of support from the citizens and and businesses in the in the county, so. It's been really good. So this is one more way for some that can't get out, help place flags, do something small. Right.
Thanks, Bryce.
Yep, thank you.
Next item of the agenda would be the NDSU Financial Partnership Review. Partnership review uh from NDSU is uh something they do. Is it biannually or annually?
I believe it's biannually.
Biannually based on the um support that they get from the legislature and from counties. Um.
Make the motion that we. Keep supporting this. Uh, financial partnership with the N D S U.
Basically, it's a fifty percent match.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the N D S U financial partnership. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, Court Facility Advisory Committee Grant. So when Roger started talking about bathroom renovations up on third floor. And uh this letter happened to pop into my mailbox at home, I thought, you know, maybe a a person could. Somehow tie the two together. Um. Not sure if that would be completely possible.
So this would be just an an application, try to get.
Try to get additional funding. From the North Dakota Courts. Um, they do this on an annual basis, I think it looks like. Uh, according to their grant application, I think they do it three or four times a year. Uh, next uh due date would be the thirty first of December. We uh money distributed uh towards the end of January.
Um, we'd be kind of a fool not to put in four cents, it's a grant, right?
Right.
At least try.
I think it's a twenty five, seventy five, twenty five grant.
How we've done this in the past, so how it works is we would have to um. Report um who we have all paid. Um, submit to the um advisory committee and then they in turn review it and then. Um.
I mean, basically.
Reimburse a check back for like seventy five percent.
The project on third floor helps the court system, so you would think it would qualify. Or at least try to.
Well.
There's something in there about. A- ADA related improvement will not be considered.
Yep.
Yeah, but what can you do then? You don't have to follow ADA anymore, I mean, any project. Yeah, was that the purpose, the whole purpose of it was to just get it ADA or was it? Yes, because we're updating bathrooms, it has to be ADA compliant. You can even, you can even look at the generator thing, I mean, a portion of it's. Used to keep the courthouse going, it's keep that floor going also, right? That's not to be eighty eight, I mean, that's to help the whole thing. They're using a percentage of it, if it was, I mean, you could put that in there. Well, we, not that wordsmither, but uh that's a lot of it.
I can do some research on it.
Well, I think maybe one of the the first things that the courts ask for is to set up a a committee. Um. Three members of the committee constitute a decorum, blah, blah, blah. Majority of the voting members in attendance at a meeting is necessary for final committee action. Um, so it looks like they're asking for a committee to be placed uh together.
And we must have set one of those up before. If we've done this before, right Candy? You recalled yet?
You you know, I'm not sure if we've ever set a committee to do this or not, um.
No.
We've always just had projects that fell into it.
Well, and I'm not even sure if we have projects that have fallen into it.
But I think this is the court's. Followings, not not ours.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
It's their, it's their rules and procedures. Of how it's handled, um.
Internally and at the court level?
Yep.
Okay.
It looks like we need to be doing some more research before we can submit anything in the next criteria, December thirty first, so that give us some time to. Do the research.
Well, one of the things that could potentially qualify is the additional space allocation um. Proposal that we're looking at for the state's attorney's office. Um, you know, we could submit something. You know, Bo has put together a pretty good uh plan for that, we could take a look at that and um. Whether or not, and I can't remember, I thought I saw in there that they wanted um. Cost estimates and all that, so we'd have to do that.
And this is for each project, so.
Right. So we could do separate grant proposals or requests for.
And as one gets denied, doesn't mean that the other one.
Yep.
Wouldn't go through. I mean, if you don't submit anything, you ain't gonna get anything.
Yep. So. Okay.
So we just wanna table it, or what do you wanna?
Well, let's um. We'll work with uh Bo and Roger and Nicole up in Clerk of Court's Office and. See if we can come up with a couple different grant options before the December thirty first deadline.
You need that in motion, or you want a motion for that, or what do you want?
Uh, if you'd like us to go ahead with it. Um, go ahead and put it in a formal motion.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we move on with at least putting something together for application or applications. To move on for the grant.
Okay.
Second, Doc.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and and uh. Put a couple grant applications together possibly for the court uh facilities grant application process. Due December thirty first, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, approve the twenty twenty five budget. What everybody's been. Waiting patiently for. We have uh final numbers at all, Candy, or do they look exactly like? Like this?
Um, yeah, I did not change anything.
Okay. Were there a- anything that any commissioners wanted to bring up, discuss? For potential eliminations?
I think we've changed everything that we can, except I would make a motion that the. Commissioners stipend remain the same as twenty twenty three or.
Twenty twenty four.
Yep.
Yep. And I think that was part of the discussion early on is that's something that we all kind of agreed upon. Um. And salaries, you know, uh. Always a contentious uh period of time up here in the courthouse. Um. You know, wish we could be more generous, I know our cost of living increased a three percent, we all know that cost of living has gone up. Um, way more than that, um certainly appreciate all our employees and everything they do for the citizens of Ramsey County. Um. Something that certainly not guaranteed, but needs to be kept in the budget. Um. So. With that, uh.
I do have a couple questions, so with Roger coming in here and saying that. Basically, he was put in the budget for two hundred thousand, so we would be able to drop that down fifty to a hundred thousand. Cause his his bids come in at seventy two and he was figuring right around twenty thousand, extra ten thousand to. So you got a hundred thousand there, what's the other hundred thousand gonna be used for? And then with that, I do have. Um, I know Bo had put in for. The other lawyer to get a thirty thousand dollar pay raise. Um, me sitting on this side of the table, I think that's quite steep, for the fact is when we hired her on, she knew what she was getting hired on as. And. To go up a couple steps, I understand that, but to max someone to someone else that's working in the courthouse with. A year to two years of experience, I have that troublesome for. Every department in the courthouse should be able to go through and say that they're gonna raise their. Employees' rates to a substantial amount, I don't think that's fair across the board. And I'm not saying the individual is not a good individual for that, but a thirty thousand dollar increase is quite substantial. I mean, when we take a job, we all know where we're starting and we all know where we can get. So are we putting this person above and beyond? The others that work for us? And I'm not trying to pick on you, Bo, I'm just looking at it as a whole. And then one other question I have probably for Kevin, we were looking at seven hundred thousand dollars for a salt place. Is that something that? It's quite expensive, right? Own that, who is a truck? I mean, I know it's super expensive, is it something that we absolutely need just because last year was a rainy season? Or I can't remember the numbers of what the truck was. I mean, we def- we definitely need the truck, but is it something that we can't work with? Um, our entities around for the salt storage, you know, to s- to s- to save that. Let's say four hundred thousand, I mean, I'm looking at four hundred, three hundred, another hundred, looking at half a million dollars. And and. I know the budgets are tight, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but half a million dollars, a half million dollars. You know, and I know Kevin, you already covered your budget quite a bit, I know it probably seems like you're getting kicked on most, but you probably have one of the biggest budgets. I'm just, is it, is it absolutely, you know what I'm saying? And and that's the question, you know, right?
Uh, I don't think that's something we wanna kick down the road either, I mean, been a long, you know, I mean, it's. That's a definite improvement for the future. And I know, um, I've talked with Wade, Street Guy at City and all, they're they're limited in space too, and it's not that they're willing, not willing to help us, but. At some point, they're gonna get pinched for. Right, you know, I mean. You know, they're. Their their salt shed really wasn't big enough and they built it either, you know, so. Um. Yeah, it's, you know, work for now, but if we have another, um. Have the opportunity to take care of something now, I think that's the.
And and that's fine, it's just a question, I. Hey, I guess that's all I have, it's.
Well, I guess, my opinion on the. State's Attorney's Wage, um. The only problem I really had with it is coming at budget time. But Bo and Brian did do the work, you know, it it seems like a big raise. But I'm gonna trust that they did the work that. All the things they asked for in that budget were. They have the documentation to to prove that they're just trying to get everything at par, and I would think that.
Being fair and equitable.
You know, and just for future. Budgetary things, if somebody thinks that they're. The employees or or their, you know, that that wage study we did was off base, that they need to get in touch with Brian and they need to go to the work. That Bo went to, to, you know, do the research and see what par is, you know? Instead of just coming in and asking for, this is what I want, no. And I I agree, it's it's a big raise, but.
I don't think the the wage study was done, or I don't think that one was part of the wage study though. We decided that on the other employees, as far as the wage study not be with par, it wasn't saying that her wage wasn't. Within par with the wage study, we're still keeping her in the category that she's in, it's just. Moving her closer to the top. You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I got you.
I mean, w- we're basing off, if you if you move her to the closer to the top, where are we putting that as experience? I mean, that's a question for you, Bo, I mean, what's that? As a, as a employee coming in, what are you saying it would credit her for experience, right? I get it, she was right out of school, I understand that, but now she's got a year, year and a half under her belt, I understand that. Does that move to move someone thirty thousand dollars, right?
I need to clarify, it wasn't thirty thousand dollars, Commissioner Volk, uh. I think it was, actually, I'll pull the number for you.
I think it was closer to twenty.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
And that puts her at what, what step then?
Um. It does move her along the steps. But like I had previously stated though, I pulled all the comps, I showed them to you. She's underpaid by far comparable to all the other job opportunities she has available. And it's my position that it would be incredibly. More expensive than fifteen thousand dollars to recruit and train a new assistant state's attorney, that's my position. And as far as experience goes, um. I can find the step scale that I was sent by H R and tell you where she would land on there, you just give me a moment.
Candy, Candy's got it.
So, when we, why I'm asking this step, Bo, is where does that leave you as a supervisor? To be able to, okay? How much before she's maxed out, right? And then all of a sudden, okay, I'm gonna move on because I'm maxed out at this job, because we've had some. Departments come in here and say, well, I'm maxed out, all I get is a three percent raise because I have no more steps to improve that, right? So can you move up too fast? And then put us all that are sitting in this commission in a hard spot of now we gotta renovate everything because. You're maxed out as an employee. You know, where some of the employees here have been here twenty five, thirty years and became maxed out and they had to go through all those levels. Levels to get maxed out, or do we put someone up to the max too fast and now we're looking in the end anyway? That's all I'm asking, I'm saying that it's it's not sufficient.
No, I understand, um, I guess in theory that could happen, but uh my position would be. You can say no now and lose out on somebody who wants to be in our community. And spend the money to train somebody to get where I'm asking to go anyway, or. You can compensate them appropriately. With. I would say a reasonable guarantee that they're gonna stay for a while, uh because they're being compensated appropriately. That's, that's how I look at it, it, there's certainly.
If you feel we compensate, this individual's not gonna come back next year and say, well, you know what, I got compensated this much. I wanna be compensated even more, so there's gotta be a time where we have to put our foot down also. And I'm not saying that this is the time, I'm just saying so that you're aware as a supervisor that. It could come to that time and she's aware as an employee that that could come to a halt also.
I understand, um.
Just so we're all aware.
Yep, we're all on the same page as far as that's concerned, and ultimately, you all hold the power. That's where we're at, I believe I put together.
Nope, and then pretty. I'm not taking that away from anyone, I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
Before it's a yes on the budget and then we're stuck. Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
I do have the same thinking I landed. Budget differences from last year, and I'd also like to remember. Different departments were looking at cutting some things back. On what I would call administrative costs to that department. Most of them didn't appreciate the job.
Looking at things as they were presented in the preliminary budget hearing. Negative four point three nine percent uh, increase from last year, so our budget actually went down. So, and looking at. Final numbers, would that be the number of mills? One, this one. Hundred and fifteen point nine zero.
So how, where are we at as far as mills candy and work and where, if we needed to, can we go? Like maxing, the max is?
Max on general is sixty, based on legislator.
Right, and we're at fifty-eight.
County Road, we're at three point nine seven, we can go to five. County Bridge, we're at point five zero, and that can go to five. Uh, Corrections, we're at ten, we're at, that's the maximum mill levy. Um, we don't have anything in emergency that can be at two. County Library, we're at max, County Airport, we're at the max. Blacktop, we're at about half, we're at five point zero three, max is ten. Veteran Services, max can be two mills, we're at point eight seven. Extension Service, uh, we voted on this a couple of years ago, that can go up to four, we're at two point five five. Uh, Job Development, that can go up to four, we're at one point zero nine. Uh, County Road Program, we're at the max, that was voted on a couple of years back, that's at ten. Senior Citizens can be max at two, we're at point six five. Uh, Weed Board is maximum of four, we're at two point two five. Historic uh, Society is point two five, that's max. Uh, District Health, uh, can go up to five, we're at four point four seven. Uh, Water District can go up to four, they're at two point four six. Joint Board at uh, maximum of two, we're at point nine seven. So a total mills of a hundred and twelve point zero nine. And then the three uh, state. Garrison uh, State Medical School, one each, and then Soil Conservation King and at one point eight one.
So so overall, we're in pretty good shape, it's just some of the.
Right.
Entities are maxed.
Yep.
And there's no room.
And there's no room.
Well. Correct me if I'm wrong, twenty mills of the general go to the law enforcement center as well.
Correct.
You know, so, I mean.
And and I'm just putting out the question, I mean, I'm. I'm not here to bust anyone down, it's just the question asked, because I know we're gonna be voting on this shortly and. Just so it's all out there.
And depending on what happens come November fifth with measure four, this is a budget we could be living with for.
And I've put that to the thought also.
I don't think anybody's padded their budget with that in in mind, I don't think. We have as a county, I don't think any individual departments has. As individuals or any other political subdivisions. Yeah. So we'd have to come up with some creative ways to. Generate revenue.
And the downside of that is that one point two million you spent to prairie dog funds won't be there anymore. So we'd have to come up with that too, because we're in the off year, you know, we didn't do any major projects, so that's gonna hurt us.
Yep. So. So, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the budget or approve a number for the budget?
Mr. Chairman, I would still uh. Motion that we, I don't know that we've taken and held the commissioner's stipend steady, I think we still have the three percent in there, don't we?
I've written it on my page, but I haven't. I haven't done anything.
And that's not gonna amount to a.
No, but we still have to.
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna prove the budget is still in there, then we have to.
Yeah.
So you've have, you have it written down to take that out of the budget.
Correct.
I move approve the budget.
I'll second.
We have motion in uh, second to approve the twenty twenty-five proposed budget. Uh, further discussion. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis. Will Hellmy.
Hi.
Volk.
Hi.
Gessner.
Hi.
Fritz.
Hi. Budget is approved. Wanna thank. Everybody for the due diligence that they put into this. I know it's a lot of hard work, a lot of. Uh, work and a lot of stress on Candy's office. Uh, that we put on it and uh, really appreciate all our departments and our department heads for coming up with. Uh, keeping their budgets tight. And uh. Look forward to twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Uh, a couple of last items on our agenda would be approved letters from DOT. I think there's one for a lighting. Uh, project that they're doing within the city, extraterritorial, they're gonna do uh. Enhanced lightings east of town, I believe. And I think this is just a. Heads up that they're doing it kinda thing. Project roadside improvement maintenance category, uh, project will provide roadside lighting between. Golding's Road and extraterritorial area limits of the city of Devil's Lake along the US Highway two border.
Looking at it, it's a good expansion.
So. Nothing needs to be completed on that, the next one would be a road or railroad. North Dakota County is uh, with rail, uh, Department of Transportation requesting assistance to identify locations within our jurisdiction. Where rail highway crossing safety could be approved. Have need to make this aware to them by December thirty-first. And if anybody has any crossings that. Think need to be enhanced safety wise, please.
Has anything been brought to your attention, Bo?
No.
We've got three of them that we've been putting in every year, um, they haven't met the criteria yet, but one is on the Nelson Ramsey line by Bartlett there. One is north of the rest area. The third one must be. In between the two somewhere, can't remember now, but it's on another township road. So those three we keep putting in for, but we haven't qualified yet.
Okay, so we'll be putting in for those three again.
I'm not sure how much that Seventy-Eighth Avenue. At Grand Harbor gets used, but that's a blind. Crossing there.
Right by the city itself?
Right by Grand Harbor.
Where they raised it up a lot.
They raised it up considerably and then there's a row of trees right there. And so if you're heading north, you can't, can't get a good view of what's coming down the tracks until it. It'd be too late, so even some flashing lights would be beneficial there. You know, wouldn't have to go with the whole crossing on, I don't think, but. And I, like I said, I'm not sure how much that road gets used. It's underwater for a period of time and it has been since raised up a a hair, just a hair out of water now, but.
I couldn't put in for that one too. I do know that when they put the one just east of there on on the front street, that's got the arms and everything. They said they would pay for a hundred percent of that. If they gave up all their. Ownership or whatever, not ownership, or all the responsibility on that crossing you're talking about, so it may be hard to get some.
Right, yeah.
But I can certainly put in for it.
And like I said, I'm not sure how much that road gets utilized since it was closed and under. Underwater for a period of time, maybe people have gotten used to going the other way, but now that it's open and people are, seem to be using it. There's an incredible Dukes of Hazard bridge there. You know, on that rail to cross, and you could uh, hey, definitely get some ground clearance there. So with that, I think they raised that about fifteen feet rail line did when they came through with that rail expansion project. That was a big undertaking, but that certainly won that. So, but yeah, if you think that who made that concession on that. Front street, probably not an option there, but. People need to be aware of that hazard right there. All right, um. Devil's Lake Basin Water Stewardship Awards, uh, we have our annual award. Um, yeah, the December uh, Water Conference uh, application. Form is in your packet, we're accepting nominations until the first of November. And I believe that the North Dakota Water Users is seeking out water um. Nominations for their awards given out at the same conference. Last year, our Water Stewardship Award was also selected for the um, Commodore Award, the highest. Honor given by the state of North Dakota for the water world, that was uh, Dick Johnson, former mayor. And State Water Commission Member for uh, the Devil's Lake Basin. So they have a Hall of Fame Award, a Commodore Award, and the. Um, Water Wheel Award. The Commodore Award is given out by the governor's office, approved by the governor's office. All those nomination forms are in there. Um, back at the. Water Users uh, awards are deadline is Thursday, October twenty-fourth. Devil's Lake Joint Board, our nomination is, deadline is the um, first of November. And that is all our agenda items, visitors and delegations. If anybody has anything before we. Uh, move into executive session. The one announcement that I'd like to make, maybe. Devil's Lake Regional Airport Ribbon Cutting Open House uh, today, this afternoon at one PM. Uh, from one to three, it's an opportunity for the community to come out and view the new terminal expansion, it was about a sixteen million dollar. Uh, project that was completely funded through the federal government. About a nineteen month project that uh, is taking place. Ribbon cutting will take place at about one fifteen. And uh, the public is invited as well as certainly all commissioners. Like to remind everybody about that. Uh, with that, uh.
I'll be a visitor again.
Okay.
I must have an old agenda. I'm curious about the executive session and the um, any um. Feedback from the Attorney General. On Bo's letter to them. Is that what the executive session is about, or?
A deck, executive session is partially about that, it's also to talk about reasonably anticipated litigation.
So when you go into this session, when does the public learn? Anything about what you talk about, or how does the public learn anything you talk about, or?
So it's closed, uh, so they can talk freely with their attorney.
Yep.
It's similar to how if you had an attorney, you have something called attorney-client privilege. Uh, it means that not everybody gets to know what your business is, not everybody gets to see your hand. They cannot make a final decision about which way to go in executive session, anytime there's a final decision that has to be made in an open meeting. However, they can provide me directions to negotiate or to research further or coordinate. Any kind of strategy, plan, response to a reasonably anticipated lawsuit. Does that make sense?
Yep, I would ask that whatever communication you have with them, that you make sure that they do it to you in writing. So that you have a record of what they are. Communicating to you, not emails, not phone calls, letters, because you submitted a letter, you deserve to have a letter response. Thank you.
Any other visitors or delegations?
I've heard some romblings about the letter. And uh, once again, I would just ask. Uh, this body to keep that, that uh, you know, you represent. Ramsey County. And um. To me, it's a um. You know, it's also a tax base issue, you know, we've been talking about taxes all morning, budgets, you know, think of how many acres. That uh, been affected, the tax base that you've lost. And um. I've said all along, you know, give us an income stream, we'll pay taxes on it. And so, um. I'd, I guess my thought is I just hope you, I hope you uh. Think about the Ramsey County residents when you uh. Deliver it. Thank you.
And with that, uh, under North Dakota Century Court forty-four oh four nineteen and forty-four oh four nineteen point two. Uh, next item on the agenda would be executive session. Uh, items uh, to be discussed in the executive session or to acquire legal. Um, consultation with our legal uh, attorney. At this time, a motion to move into executive session would be in order.
So moved.
We have motion in second to uh, adjourn into executive session. Uh, roll call please.
Otis.
Hi.
Will Hellmy.
Hi.
Volk.
Hi.
Gessner.
Hi.
Fritz.
Hi, motion carries. The executive session will be recorded, all members of the governing body are reminded to limit their discussion. During the executive session to the announced topic. Any collective discussion, collective commitment or other final action by the governing body must be. Occur after reconvene in an open meeting unless final action is specifically required by law to be taken during executive session. The prohibition on taking final action during the executive session is not applied to providing guidance or instructions to our attorney or negotiator. I will now ask that the public who are attending the meeting now leave the room, we anticipate adjourned the executive session. In twenty minutes. Uh, at that time, we'll reconvene. The minutes will show the executive session beginning at ten fifteen AM. Okay?
And I, I did, when I popped out, I talked to Michelle about that, so. Just so everybody's on the same page, this is recorded, it's just not live streamed. And then there's certain uh. And then there's certain uh, procedures in the law for like who can request seeing it and review it and stuff like that.
She went in there to end it, if you can.